Okay, Mr. Marshall. You are the co-host of this meeting. I have 6:33 on my clock. You have a quorum of the board here. You actually have the full, not quite the full board, but you have a quorum. Amherst Media is with us in the house. I do think you're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of September 17th, 2025. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and further extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this Planning Board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda, posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event public access is disrupted, or for reasons of economic hardship, or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer it affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
Yeah.
Fred Hartwell.
Present.
Jesse Major.
Present.
I, Doug Marshall, am present. Angus MacLeod.
Present.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Jara Smith is not present at this point. He has indicated he will join us at a later time in the meeting. Board members, if technical issues arise and the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, that's the preamble. Time is 6:37. First item on the agenda is minutes. However, I did not see any minutes in the packet. Pam, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. At some point, probably soon, it would be helpful to me if you would let it, let me know how many minutes behind are we? Maybe you could email me sometime in the next week or so. If we need to pause in terms of canceling a meeting or something to allow you to catch up, we certainly could consider that. Okay, next item on the agenda. It's 6:38 and we have public comment period. I am seeing two attendees from the public. This is the point in the meeting where I usually read the names of the public attendees that I can see, so they all know who else is in the room. So the two members of the public, if either of you want to make a comment at this time about something that doesn't appear later on the agenda, now is the time to do that. So raise your hand, please. So I see Aiden Sabina, or maybe Sabina Aiden, and Maria. Yeah, there's no last name. All right, so thus far neither of them have raised their hand to make a comment. Give them a couple more seconds and then we'll move on. We actually, our next item is advertised for 6:40, I believe. So we will wait at least a minute here until it turns into 6:40 to get to that item. I'm just looking at the clock, waiting for my clock to turn to 6:40. I do not see any hands raised from our two public attendees. All right, my clock just changed. I don't know about yours. So at this point, I'm going to conclude there is no public comment offered this evening, and we'll move on. Next item is a public hearing, site plan review, and a special permit request advertised for 6:40 PM. SPR 2025-08 and SPP 2025-01. The applicant is Archipelago Investments LLC. Project name is Gould Way and Lanin Lane. This hearing is continued from five previous meetings, May 7th, June 4th, June 18th, July 16th, and August 20th. Request site plan review approval under Section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with three buildings, including 140 residential units, approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial space, 180 parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request a special permit under footnote A of Table 3, Article 6 of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback beyond the maximum required, building height to exceed the maximum allowed, and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. This is located in the BVC Village Center Business Zoning District. The parcels on map 25B, it's two parcels, 52 and 58. All right. I believe from an email that was in the packet, the applicant has requested to continue to October 22nd. And Nate, would it be correct that, as in our past continuations, we don't want to take any testimony or have any discussion? We simply want to go to a motion to continue and leave it at that?
Correct. Yep. I, yeah, I'll say that, you know, on the 22nd, we could have maybe more discussion. The applicant is still meeting with the Conservation Commission, so there really are no updates. I'm hoping by that date, there'll be something.
Okay. Okay. Jesse?
I was just going to move to continue October 22nd.
All right.
6:40 PM.
Should we, Nate or Pam, what do we have on the agenda? Would 6:40 work again?
Actually, 6:35 is what we should do. Yeah.
Okay, 6:35.
All right, thank you. And Bruce, did I see you raise your finger to second it? He has nodded yes for those who are just listening. Okay, so we have a motion to continue to 6:35 at, I'm sorry, to October 22nd at 6:35 PM. So we'll go right into our vote for that. Bruce, why don't we start with you?
I approve.
All right. Fred?
Aye.
Angus?
Yes.
Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's six in favor, one absent. Motion carries. So Bruce, I see your hand.
Yes, Doug, if I may just to comment on the Archipelago application, simply to say that if anybody is curious here, it might be worth looking at the October 27th Conservation Commission hearing about 45 minutes in.
Did you mean to say October 27th?
Yeah.
I probably meant to say August 27th.
August, okay.
Yeah. I found that quite interesting and certainly helped me manage my expectations around this project.
All right. August 27th. Great. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Planning Board reorganization and authorization. We still need to appoint a board liaison to the design review board. So Nate, I think at our last meeting, you were going to talk to Karen on...
Yeah, excuse me, I didn't reach out to Karen. I reached out to the town manager's office as they work with board and committee members. She's still on the design review board, and so it was a discussion that was, I think the town manager was out of the office a bit and kind of deciding, you know, how to proceed. So my understanding is that she, you know, Karen was voted the Planning Board representative, and the term expires next June, so Karen can continue sitting on the design review board. The planning board chooses another representative, then we can, you know, move that forward. But, you know, at the last meeting, it seemed like everyone was, you know, had their, had opportunities and no one volunteered.
Okay. Board members, is there anyone since the last meeting that you suddenly have a burning desire to be on the DRB starting now as opposed to maybe next summer? All right, I am not seeing any hands raised or facial expressions indicating great excitement and urgency. All right, so we will leave it at that, Nate. I guess if you can let the town manager know that we will not appoint a new member at this point. The second item under that general category was related to authorization to sign approval not required and subdivision plans. Do you want to kind of give an overview of that, Nate?
Yeah, typically every year, along with the voting of officers, there's a document, a letter that's provided that names the signatory authority for the planning board that gets filed with the town clerk, and I might actually go to the registry too. But it, you know, it's a, becomes a legal document to say, here's who can sign on behalf of the board for these two types of plans.
It does go to the registry, Nate, and the land records office.
All right.
And so generally, it's the officers. You make a motion to approve the officers to sign those A&amp;Rs or subdivision plans.
All right, so it's just Mia's chair. I'm forgetting who my vice chair is. Is it still Johanna? And then secretary is who? Bruce?
Bruce.
All right, and we don't have a treasurer, do we? So thank you for laughing, Bruce. So the motion would be that the board endorses having the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary authorized to sign the A&amp;Rs and the subdivision plans on behalf of the board. Is that accurate? Okay. Bruce?
So moved.
All right, Jesse?
I second that.
All right, thank you both. Any discussions among the board? Not seeing any hands raised. Go ahead and go to a vote. We'll start at the end of the alphabet of your last names. That means I'm going to start with Johanna.
Aye.
Thank you. And Jesse?
Aye.
And Angus?
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That motion carries six in favor, one absent. Thank you all. All right, so that's it for number four of our agenda. We can now move on to the mediaist probably part of the meeting, which is the general housing discussion. Yes?
Before we do, I thought also that there was a a move to allow you alone to sign decisions. Is that something that also needs a vote, or is that just a declaration?
Nate, we voted something like that last time, didn't we?
Did we? Oh, maybe I was.
Yeah, thanks. That was voted. It's a, you know, currently, it's an internal document. I think that in the future, if we wanted to, we could change the rules and regulations. Well, the public hearing, I think there is probably other things to update in the rules and regs, but for now, that's sufficient.
My apologies.
That's all right. Never hurts to check. All right, so next is general housing discussion. Continuing the discussion about potential changes in zoning for housing around town. Clearly, the last thing we've talked about was an overlay for the apartment area in North Amherst. Who would want to open this? Nate, I think you sent around a new document for us. You are muted.
Yeah, I was trying to get my screen set up. Yeah, thanks, everyone. So I think some of this also, you know, there's a few reasons why I think it's nice to step back at the previous Housing Subcommittee, Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. There was some discussion about, you know, why focus on North Amherst and kind of what's the context and the idea of that? And I think, you know, Jesse and others said, well, you know, there's other parts of town. It's just it's easier to focus on one rather than a few at the same time. I also think it's kind of apropos of the Housing Production Plan being finished. And, you know, I think, I think, well, it's not, you know, it's, the planning board has recommended it. The town councils referred it to CRC, the Housing Production Plan. But staff are still thinking about having the Planning Board and Trust maybe meet next month or early November to talk about housing strategies, and this would also then apply townwide. You know, it goes to the idea of having a zoning Subcommittee as part of, you know, part of the housing committee too, to look at zoning. And so kind of, you know, we have a zoning priorities list, and how does that work townwide? And so, you know, I think tonight could just be like, well, what are some other areas of interest? And it could be that it's, where would it meet the same kind of purpose and intent as the North Amherst overlay? And then also, what are other areas in town to explore for, you know, new development or changes to zoning? And so there was a few maps in the packet. One was kind of just a base map showing streets and properties. One was a figure ground, and one was a, what called a simplified zoning map. It tried to symbolize, you know, commercial and business zones, and then residential zones. And we can look at that as well. You know, there's also some other zoning districts. So yeah, I think, you know, the planning board, I guess, gosh, it was two years ago already. We had extra meetings to talk about, you know, what are some ideas around town? What are some areas to look at? And, you know, to me, this is also a, you know, it's picking up on that conversation. I think the University Drive overlay was, you know, some fruition of that discussion. We had talked about East Amherst. We're looking at North Amherst. You know, in the past, there had been discussions about Gateway. I'll just, you know, we can call that from, you know, downtown to university along North Pleasant. There's Olympia Drive, where there's a few developments happening. You know, and there's other parts of town. I mean, there's other village centers. There's other areas. And so, I mean, I could share my screen. We could just talk about it generally. I think, you know, the North Amherst overlay is interesting. It's an idea where it's probably predominantly students. You know, I don't think we're necessarily going to zone for that. We could. But, you know, if you look at the townwide map, that area is proximal to the university, and there's the ability to probably have multimodal transportation to the campus and other places. And although there may be cars parked in that area, hopefully they're not driving, you know, individually every day. You know, and then maybe there's other parts of town that we could explore for other kinds of zoning. Now, we do have three institutions in town, you know, Hampshire College, Amherst, and UMass. There's a lot of land there. I recently gave a presentation to council this week on the master plan. You know, one of the questions that was asked, it was asked a few times, is what, how much land in Amherst is developable? And what, you know, can we map it? And the Housing Protection Plan did that a little bit. I mean, generically speaking, we'd say that half of Amherst isn't developable. And that's true to an extent. I think that, you know, there's conservation land, there's agricultural preservation land, there's some institutional land, there's wetlands and riverfront. But, you know, some institutional land could be developed. So Amherst College could develop some of its properties. Hampshire and UMass could. You know, zoning could change. I think that, but there is a fair amount of town that, you know, whether or not we zone it, you know, it has probably limited development potential just because of certain constraints. And so it's really about, okay, what can we do in the other 50% of Amherst that may have the infrastructure? You know, there isn't water and sewer everywhere. Water in most places, there's, you know, a few places without sewer that have septic. So those are in the outlawing areas, South Amherst and kind of Northeast Amherst. So yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think it's just good to kind of have a conversation, you know, and maybe, you know, and from that, there can be other explorations. So, you know, just, you know, the Housing Protection Plan has a number of strategies. You know, I'll mention cottage-style development, right? So multiple principal dwellings on a property. Or, you know, I think we have to work on that. But, you know, it could be that we like this idea of having six to 10 units on a property or some area. And maybe that's appropriate in some zoning districts. And maybe then we're also looking at, you know, some other strategy for somewhere else in town. So I, you know, from this conversation and with the zoning list, we could come up with a few ideas, and we could continue to talk about over the next month or two. You know, I think the overlay in North Amherst, I think it's at a point where we probably should have a public meeting about it. We can discuss it more tonight, but, you know, I think there's a lot of questions and concerns by residents in that area. I'm not sure, you know, how much support there is. Generally speaking, I think some of this conversation tonight is to kind of frame that as well, to say, well, you know, we spent a long time talking about ADUs, and the concern is that, oh, my goodness, they're all going to be student rentals. It's like, well, let's, could we talk about maybe where we could house students? It's really hard to zone for the end user. So I was just in a meeting today, and someone said, well, is there a way we can change some of the development methods to prevent students? And I'm like, not really. You know, you can do age-restricted housing is allowed, and that's about it. Affordable housing typically doesn't include students. It does, and there's some variables there, but most often undergraduate students don't qualify for affordable housing. So there's very few legal mechanisms to, you know, zone or have development that's not for students. And so you know, the reality is our housing market has that, and there's other pieces to the development too. Is it mixed use? Is it economic development? Is it general growth? So.
So Nate, you know, I think one way to zone for students is to do it geographically, because we know where their desire line is. So if we, you know, upzone for students in the vicinity of the university, it's pretty likely students will end up in those buildings if anything new is built. And, I mean, that is probably a rational way to zone for students. But in terms of sort of the typology of the buildings, yeah, I agree. That's not very, it's not practical to try to do that. I mean, unless I suppose you could limit the number of kitchens or something to sort of turn them into quasi-dormitories that, you know, I mean, I suppose there's something you could do with that, but I haven't thought about it much.
Right, yeah. So we have the definition of residential use classification, social dormitory, which is different than an apartment, right? So the idea is a social dormitory is for matriculated students, and it can include like suite-style living, whereas an apartment is a unit, is a, you know, an individual dwelling unit.
Right. I guess the other thing I'll say is, you know, there are, there's, I don't know if it's a majority, but certainly there's a lot of people in town who don't want to see Amherst change its character. And so by doing, by expanding the potential of the area right around the university, we hopeful, I mean, I guess we could in fact limit the amount of the rest of the town that changes, at least in terms of the built environment, whether, you know, who lives in those old houses could change. So that's one approach is to try to expand the housing right around the university and leave everything else alone. And the other approach would be to take a more distributed, I mean, to do it in a more distributed way so that we increase the massing of, whether it's the village centers, or it's just along the major roadways, or some other criteria, or everywhere. You know, we could just say, we're going to eliminate single-family, single-house zoning throughout Amherst, and now you can have up to four units, or six to 10 units, or whatever we want to say, and just see how that shakes out. Of course, that probably wouldn't get through council. But you know, I think we could talk about the different approaches before we get too far into the areas, but that's my thoughts. Jesse, you've been patient. You're next.
Thanks. Thanks, Doug. And thanks for the segue too. I just want to reiterate, that's something Nate said when he started introducing the topic, but in a slightly different way, which is just to say for the record that after University Drive, the increasing density at already apartment zone properties was the next sort of biggest impact, at least the Subcommittee imagined we could make. Given the proximity to the university and that it's already somewhat dense, and the physical topography of the North Amherst that we're talking about really lends itself to density that exactly what you said, Doug, would not change the physical look of the majority of, well, certainly that neighborhood, and even to the eyes of people driving by. And so that's at least why the, in large part, why the Subcommittee focused on North Amherst first. And that was sort of the order, if my memory is correct. You're right, two years ago, when I first joined the board, we had those meetings. We looked at the different areas, and we all agreed that University Drive seemed like the sort of simplest way to start, and that North Amherst was an attractive second, if I recall. I think we had talked about East Amherst. We debated what would be next, East Amherst or North Amherst. And again, the point really I'm trying to make is, North Amherst has been no way the only place we're looking at to decrease pressure on the neighborhoods in all of Amherst with student rentals. That's it for now. Thanks.
Yeah, I think the, I was just going to jump in. Doug, I think geographically is a great approach for students. I think, you know, there is the existing village centers, and then there's major roadways. You know, for instance, East Amherst, what we had talked about at one point was, you know, say from railroad, the rail, from Hampshire Lumber, you know, down to however far you want to go on College Street and beyond. Could they go to the Fort River and, you know, Gatehouse Road area? Does it stop at the intersection by Florence Savings Bank and Cumberland Farms? In any event, you know, there could be increased density there. And then the discussion was, well, right, depending on how it's designed, is it mostly students? Is that where we want to have people then commuting through town? At the same time, you know, I feel like there is some ability to say, well, we do a few things at the same time, you know, maybe East Amherst is, you know, you can have a density bonus or increase floor if you have, say, more affordability. Or I think, you know, a 4DR district is, the town has applied for a technical assistance grant to look at a 4DR district, which is a, you know, smart zoning overlay with some percentage of affordable housing, 20 or 25% in some minimum densities and design standards. You know, I think East Amherst is one area we mentioned, and there's a few others in town. And so, you know, there could be some other creative ideas to say, well, maybe we, you know, we do a few things. We look at a few overlays or a few areas around campus, and then we also look at this smart zoning for East Amherst to achieve some other density with some affordability component. You know, and I, you know, and I think they all could happen. It's a matter of kind of, I guess, capacity and time, and what we think is reasonable. You know, I, you know, I'm, I get it. what we think is reasonable, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I get it, North Amherst, right? So to Jesse's point, North Amherst residents will say it's already the densest part of town, given the amount of multi-unit developments there. And so the concern is, well, how, how does all that play out in terms of emergency response and traffic impacts and visual impacts? And so I think, you know, what the overlay, what we've done so far to me is that I think that there's a really nice framework there and some of it is, you know, I think having some public meetings about it, making some tweaks. But I think there's, there's always going to be that concern, right? So if we said that, you know, the area of north of Fearing, let's densify it in Olympia Drive. You know, some areas might be a little bit more isolated from existing neighborhoods, but I think geographically, uh, in two thousand, literally two thousand teens, you know, the university town gown relation, UTAC, steering committee, they also identified a few areas proximal to the university and said, these make a lot of sense. And one was actually redeveloping the university apartments with more density. And one of their concepts was essentially putting in a second street and having a grid network, you know, like basically townhouse developments. And they said, without much density or without much height, you could, you know, double density, just having a different site layout. It wasn't nearly as open as it is now. Um, you know, Mass Ave is an area where, you know, it's still university land, but is there public private partnerships possibilities? And so, you know, even if there's, to me, it's like, if we say Mass Ave is a great location, whether or not, uh, I think to me it would be nice to have a map that said, here are some areas identified, whether or not we work on them or if it's an imminent possibility, it's nice to say for the conversation with North Amherst, here are all these other areas that are possibilities that will be examined and assessed at some point on more depth.
All right, Bruce.
The, the, the most consequential uh, objection that I've heard so far, so far as the North Amherst proposition is concerned, uh, the proposition to, uh, an overlay that would increase potentially threefold, probably threefold. That seems to be our so-called magic number. The most consequential objection, you know, we've heard the traffic objection, we've heard the party noise objection and, and it, there are ways in which we've responded to that by saying, we could do this, we could do that. Management plans, reduced or eliminate parking. Uh, there, there are workarounds, potentially workarounds. Uh, but Kathy Shane, uh, when she was on, she said, um, you know, the existing housing at, say, Puffton Village, uh, there's a lot of it there. And we would be talking about substituting um, three times as many new units for the, the units that are currently there. She said, those units that are currently there are rather affordably rented. And the new unit she asserted would likely be far more expensive to rent, all of them, except of course, the affordable housing fraction, which is twelve percent. And I, I can't think of a work, I, I think she's, I think she's right. And I can't think of a workaround for that, but it seems to be, um, something that we have to respond to, think about or accept. Uh, we, we should at least, I think, quantify it by understanding what the current rents are and we can reasonably, reasonably project what the new rents are. So at least we could bracket that concern by putting numbers on it or data around it. But, um, whereas I, we've come up with, um, I'll use the term workaround just because it's easier for the purposes of conversation for other um, large concerns that we and the population, you know, we have. But is there a way, is there a workaround for this concern? And, I mean, I don't think we can obligate, we might not even be able to incentivize uh, new developers to, uh, redevelopers to provide uh, a greater fraction of, or have put some kind of rent cap or on it. But it's, uh, so I don't know what that, I don't know what, I don't know what a workaround for this concern is. And I think it's, uh, it's a real one. So I guess I would ask, who among us shares this concern? Uh, have I characterized it accurately or insufficiently or mischaracterized it in some way that would help me wrestle this one along? Um, do we agree that this is perhaps the most consequential objection we're likely to encounter?
Uh, Jesse?
Thanks. Um, yes.
I, I assume you're responding to Bruce. I think let's, let's do that before you do your next comment.
No, that's why I raised my hand. Um, this came up at our meeting last week, the subcommittee as well. Uh, I totally agree. That's an important concern. I'm not sure I agree with the statement though. Anecdotal evidence from my own family and their friends who live in Puffton Village, for example, tell, tell me it's not at all cheaper than other places around town. So I don't have a good amount of data, but that's what I think we do need. Um, I'm not sure how easy that will be to gather. I'm not sure if the actual data what's happening is on the leases. And a couple of examples I do know of where people are not on leases and living in a shared bedroom and paying pretty high amounts of money. So I don't know how we're going to gather the accurate information, but I totally agree. We should try. Not just for this area, but around town. And I was also just trying to find, well, while ago, someone, I think maybe it was Janet, had compiled a list of rents in local places that was circulated, I think, among the planning board. I'll dig that up also to see what it is.
All right. I assume Nate, as part of the rental registration program, are the, do the landlords indicate the rent that's charged or not?
Not necessarily. I mean, I was, uh, after the housing subcommittee meeting, I was looking at, um, um, like the off-campus housing office at UMass and other, you know, apartment rentals dot com or whatever. You know, looking at the rates and it's, it's, it's hard because there is, uh, sometimes there's a range. And so, you know, in some places it looked like maybe the units were cheaper and others it, it didn't, you know, to say the per bedroom cost, if you wanted to break it down that way. But yeah, I think we could, we could source some data and, you know, present it.
Do the landlords have websites that say, here's, here's the rooms I have and
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would think that, that, that information would be somewhat advertised.
I feel like it's a prisoner's dilemma though, right? That kind of game, the economic game where it's like, you know, you don't know what the other one's charging, so everyone keeps charging more and it's a, you know, so if we think that someone can get so much and we know that it's, you know, whether or not the new apartments, but you know, between Fieldstone and eleven to thirteen East Pleasant and however else, whatever else is in the area, you know, that becomes the benchmark. And so
Yeah.
agree that if, you know, these were new units and they're, you know, they will be nicer maybe or bigger, whatever. They will be more expensive. I think it's a really difficult thing to um, to manage that. I would say the idea would be to let's get enough housing supply where maybe there's vacancies, a vacancy rate at the, the price is stabilized. Um, it's hard to manage through zoning, you know, there probably are some, a few mechanisms are going to incentivize more affordability or more units or deeper affordability, but it wouldn't cover all of the units, right? It would just be a focused amount.
All right, Angus and then Johanna.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, which was, um, in the planning subcommittee, we, we, I looked up what, um, Puffton was charging. It was about a thousand dollars per bedroom. So, um, they have different sized units and so that, but there's some flexibility there, but that's not a particularly cheap unit, um, to start with. And I guess I would just, you know, um, echo what, what Nate is asserting that I tripling the supply of available apartments in that area would, yes, if they're newer, there, there could be some upward price pressure on rents, but if we, if we continue to try to push greater supply, it's going to alleviate the housing issues with students and drive down rents across town entirely. I mean, that's just basic supply and demand.
All right, Johanna.
That's what I was gonna say, supply and demand curves. So I'd be happy to see data, but I have enough information tonight and I don't think it's worth spending staff time like looking up rents throughout town. And I, so Bruce, I guess in your question, I don't know that this would satisfy Counselor Shane, but I would just go back to basic market principles of supply and demand. And that when increased supply costs go down.
I'll make it my business to find the answers to rentals in Puffton Village. And so I can, I'll make a little two paragraph report on that. But it sounds like, uh, what the three things that have been said that maybe my concern is not as, uh, uh, doesn't rise to the height that, uh, level that I may have believed it would. Thank you for that.
Um, I, I, I was gonna comment, Bruce, that uh, I think any, any new construction is gonna, is gonna set the benchmark for the town. Because if some, if there's plenty of demand and somebody has to pay that amount, the other landlords are gonna adjust their rent to however competitive in comparison to that new construction they have to be in order to attract the tenants that they want. Um, so if, if somebody's charging a low amount now, it's meaning, meaning that they don't want to compete with the high-end quality market or something, they can still do that, but they would be able to raise their rent just because um, the prevalence of higher rent in town would be greater because there'd be new construction. All right. So Nate, I, I'm gonna let you jump ahead of Jesse just because you may have something about this topic before we leave it.
Yeah, I was imagining Bruce, I can help, uh, with those rent, um, pieces and also the housing production plan. So the two thousand thirteen plan and then the recent plan might also have, I know the thirteen one did, I think this one may have had a chart with the, um, you know, with properties and their rent. So, uh, you know, I can, I can look for that and provide it to you. I, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think we have to dig too hard. Um, but I think there's already some information already available and we could, you know, if it's the same apartments or the same properties from thirteen to recently, we could just, you know, have, you know, some comparisons over the last ten, fifteen years and provide that information.
All right. Uh, Bruce, I'd also say I'd rather see more capacity in town, even if that means the average rent goes up a little bit for student housing at least. Okay, uh, Jesse, you had your hand up. Is there, do you, did you have a new topic or anything?
Maybe a last comment on this topic, which was just, I don't think, I think the goal of gathering data is to be prepared for that, that, um, objection raised, that we're taking away the lower income housing, not so much to convince us. So I think we need to have data from these places, but also from other places around town. Um, the newest places are very transparent. I think that all the websites advertise the amounts, but I do think all of these that we're talking about are probably more than a lot of the single family housing that's available. Probably because there's more than four renters in most houses. But I don't know how to tackle that one in terms of presenting data.
Yeah, my only data is that the house across the street from me only has four cars in front of it this year as opposed to five. So maybe, maybe we're hitting capacity here. All right, um, Nate, did we get enough out of this conversation this evening? Should we move on or do we want to talk some more?
I'll share my screen just quickly, uh, if this is visible for folks.
It is unless you want us to look at parcels.
No, I mean, I think just generally this is a, a figure ground. Uh, this is North Amherst for now. So here's where my cursor is, is the overlay area we're talking about. Uh, Cushman's over here. And so, you know, there is, um, you know, there's always been ideas like, could you connect this neighborhood through or, you know, do certain things? Um, you know, that's, we haven't added many new roads, right? So it's what kind of infrastructure do we have? I think if I go over here to the zoning map, here's the same area. And so, you know, the dark purple and purple is what our, say, our business zones. And the, 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 I guess this is like yellow and browns are residential zone. So, you know, in North Amherst, here's the overlay in this area. There is a village center nearby. There's not a lot of areas zoned in Amherst for, you know, what would be, we consider like a business area. This is a, um, you know, so I, I think it's just, it's, it's just worth noting. So, you know, if we increase density here, to me, there is a, a benefit to the village center here. As we're moving further down to the town center, you know, here's, here's the downtown. So, you know, our BG and BL district isn't that, you know, it's, it's almost like one property wide off North Pleasant Street and Triangle Streets. Uh, here's the railroad tracks and here's East Amherst. Uh, here's, you know, commercial district along Route nine. So most of downtown is surrounded by residential zoning. You know, if we're keeping moving south, here's Pomeroy Village intersection. So village center residence, uh, zoning, some commercial zoning. You know, South Amherst is mostly residential, the South Amherst area. And then Atkins has, you know, the few areas zoned for, um, you know, business village center. And so, you know, if we're talking about density and what's allowed now, there's few areas in town that could accommodate, say, what we provided. You know, it can be done in, in these areas that are darker purple, right? So if we want to have four-story buildings, uh, and multi-unit development, you know, if you're looking at the zoning map, most of the areas in town wouldn't support it right now. And so that's to say, you know, if we talk about this, we would say, oh, we like East Amherst, we like, you know, this area north of, um, you know, call it, we'll say the old gateway, or we like some areas up in North Amherst or East Amherst. You know, I, I think that's great to have. And then some of it would be, okay, well, what's, what does the zoning allow now? And how do we move about changing that? And so, you know, the reason why we do overlays is if, if we said, well, let's just change the area here in North Amherst to allow so many units per acre. And it's at this zoning district, you can see that this zoning district covers a lot of areas of town. And so we've just made that change zoning, you know, for the whole district. And so usually that's why we'd approach it from the overlay perspective. I think, uh, you know, it may be that some of these other zones could be changed. So, you know, if we think RVC is in the right location, but it doesn't allow the right density, do we tweak just the RVC zones? You know, as we get down closer into kind of the, the details of how this, you know, the mechanics of how this would work. So I think that's, you know, I think for now, I think we have some, a good start. I, you know, I wouldn't mind hearing a few areas that we would want to consider and staff could, you know, refine that with another map. So, um, you know, if we had different, we've mentioned a few tonight, and if we have a few more, I think that's a good start.
Well, well Nate, um, because most of these business areas that are allowed, where density is allowed, are surrounded by residential. You know, we get a lot of pushback on any, any contemplation of expanding those areas into the residential neighborhood. But I think there are probably a number of places where, from a sort of urban, urban structure point of view, you could expand those areas slightly and, and get, you know, incremental expansion. Um, and whether that would be an overlay or whether it would just be a change of zoning of a few parcels from one from a bit, from a residential use to a business use, I mean, I guess we could get your advice on how to do that. Um, one other thing I'll say, um, we've mostly talked, when we've talked about density, about allowing higher and larger buildings. Um, another way to do it would be to, um, to basically reduce the minimum lot size and allow, say, row houses. You know, uh, the minimum lot size could be sixteen feet wide and a hundred feet deep. And, um, you know, my half acre could be split into four or five row houses if, if you did something like that. And, and that kind of, uh, zoning could be more supportive of individual family ownership. Uh, whereas the large buildings, they're going to be rental units pretty much forever. Um, so, you know, I think we do have some influence on the ownership structure and possibly the occupancy, depending on how we geographically configured it. All right. Now Jesse and then Angus.
Great. Thanks Doug. I completely agree with everything you just said. And that leads nicely.
Where would you do that?
Well, that leads nicely into what I was gonna say. So, so with full transparency that it literally is my backyard. Um, I think I'd love to have a deeper look at not just what was previously called Gateway, but basically north of Fearing. So the, the area immediately abutting the campus. And the reason I, you know, to me, that's another prime location, just like the university, the North Amherst area we're looking at. Because we can increase density and limit the number of cars. Because students can easily walk and bike to campus in town. And I think that to me is a pretty high priority when we're thinking about. And I think that, to me, is a pretty high priority when we're thinking about areas. Um, that's a constant conversation with all of our development proposals that we talk about on planning board is, what's the right number of cars? How do we reduce more traffic? All this over and over and over again, and so I think that's perfect. And I think that little strip between campus and Fearing is basically perfect for what you just said, Doug. This idea of townhouse building or some other style of allowable building that increases density without massively increasing height or uh footprint.
Okay, Angus.
Yeah, I, I, I would, that, that, I think that makes a lot of sense, Jesse. Um, I think that, that, that's a, a wise idea, um, and I guess I also wonder, um, I don't wanna derail our conversation, are we, are we thinking of talking about zoning priorities in this discussion as well, or is that a separate a thing for later in the meeting? I don't wanna preempt things.
That wasn't a call later under the Housing Cell Committee report, but I guess you could pull a few things if.
Well, I, I, I'm just thinking, you know, several of the things that we're thinking about here are also zoning-related. Um, and so I, like, one of the things that I was just looking at is, you know, would it be possible, you know, rather than thinking about, if, if overlays seem like they're gonna be kind of difficult, I think there's other ways that might be um worth considering. I mean, for instance, that commercial strip over on College Street. Um, we, we don't currently allow townhouses or apartments in the commercial zone. There's only a few commercial zones in town, and so that's one thing that we could consider um, short of, of an actual overlay to try and drive some, some changes um in some of these pockets where, where it might be appropriate. Um, that was just one of the things that I was thinking about, in addition to thinking about um, redefining apartments to be slightly larger or, or creating a kind of tiered classification of apartments so that in some specific areas, we could possibly consider larger apartment buildings without doing, going through the whole process of an overlay. And that's all.
Alright, great, Bruce.
Um, I, I like uh the, the suggestion that Jesse made coupled with your suggestion, Doug. Um, when you made your suggestion, which was row houses, I thought, yes, that's, that's a, that's a very um. It's a great way of making a good, salubrious, uh dense uh housing that can be purchased, owned and, and and people can identify with. I know because a greater part of Melbourne, where I was born and grew up and, and, and lived uh ultimately uh in the center is, is row houses, exactly that, sixteen, eighteen, twenty feet wide and uh, and a hundred twenty plus or minus feet deep. And uh, however, it's a very different streetscape uh as image from the street, and I think it would be jarring to do it uh unless it was done more uniformly in a district, and it would seem that the uh district that you're suggesting, Jesse, would be a very good place to encourage exactly that, either that or maybe encourage the kind of um cottage-style cluster uh things that um. Oh, I'm blanking on the guy, Ross Chapin famously uh did some very nice work, an architect in the, on, in the, in the, in Washington State, Seattle area. But uh, if we were to take that area that you're suggesting, Jesse, and, and, and treat it as an overlay, but not the way we're thinking about uh North Amherst or even University Drive, but, but with a different style of housing that would uh fit, it would change the neighborhood, but it would change it agreeably, I think, and very interestingly and effectively from our to, in terms of our broad goals. So I like that idea, I like the, I like the, I like the coupling of what you said, Doug, and what you said, Jesse, I think that's a uh, 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 a, a, a good idea, and it's also something that, Jesse, I know you've been uh proposing or suggesting that when we go and talk to uh this with other parts of it, with North Amherst, with people around town, that it's nice to have a, say, well, this is what we're thinking of for North Amherst, this is what we're thinking of for Fearing. And, and I will finish with a, a, an even more, and shall we say far more outrageous proposition, uh because you've got the map up in front of us here. And, and it was uh because I drive up and down East Pleasant Street all the time. And you can see, uh, let's keep it there, no, 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 don't move it. Um, right opposite the uh, I think the uh, well, the, the, on the, on the north, on the east side of East Pleasant Street, right down the bottom of that little leg of conservation uh of, whether it's watershed protection or whatever the, it's, it's the diagonally hatched uh land on the east side of, or East Pleasant Street. Um, the point is that on that side, the land slopes fairly steeply down to that blue uh lagoon that's there. I guess it's the flood protection, the FP zone. Um. But the, the top part of it is, is uh, is thoroughly buildable upland. And my sense was, well, this has been blanketly put into conservation. But the, the, the top sliver of that conservation along East Pleasant Street, opposite the university, would be a very good place to put student housing because it would be exactly where we want it, and it would be uh away from almost all housing. Um, uh, parking, of course, would have to be taken, but that, that somehow wrestling some of that land out of conservation, from a logical point of, Land use point of view, at least my logical Land use point of view, would be another very good place. I just don't know whether you could achieve it.
Hey Nate, could you bring up the figure ground again so Bruce can describe this location again?
Um, well.
Is it north of, north of Eastman Lane, north of the fire station?
No, it's south of that, well south of that. Um. Uh, it's those parcels there, which are all owned by uh, by the Kestrel Trust.
Um. Oh, I see, yeah, so it's this, it's, it's, okay.
Yeah, but, but not that big circle, just a sliver uh, a hundred, a hundred or two hundred feet in from East Pleasant Street, you could do a very nice um Stephen Hull type, I don't know, not Stephen Hull, Alba Alto type MIT building along Memorial Drive, just, you know, just like that, along that, it would be a wall on that street, it would be a beautiful um opportunity, it would look wonderful, it would serve the purpose, it's a, it's a, it's, in terms of what we're trying to achieve, it's a, it's a perfect opportunity, it's just that it happens to be in a place which we probably can't touch, what a shame.
Well, okay, so you're talking about right across from the water tower.
Yes, right across and a little bit up.
Little bit north.
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I will say, I have kind of coveted that row of houses there, along there too. Because, you know, it's sort of a single set of frontage. I'm, I'm, I'm sure whoever lives there would hate me for saying it, but, you know, if we, it would be a relatively low-impact rezoning that could allow a fairly large amount of housing that did, did, was attractive and could house a lot of students right along that frontage.
Yes, well, I wasn't so much.
Those houses are a kind of a single, single depth, because the next, next houses to the east are accessed off of Chestnut Street, or rather off of Strong Street. And they're their own cul-de-sac.
Yeah, well, uh, I mean, one, one, one way of thinking about that with this, if, if the zoning was to increase the value of those houses enough, uh, that would perhaps be welcomed, or at least not objected to.
We wouldn't force them to, to move, we'd just give them an incentive to be bought out.
And, and so that would, uh, that's, I think, a little north of uh, or maybe you should have, have Nate point out your houses. Um, is it the houses south of those ones there?
That's the section from Strong Street up to the last house that I was thinking about.
Oh, okay.
And then north of that is the land that's not developed.
Yeah.
And then after that, that one next house north is a fairly historic. Uh, I don't remember whose house it is, but it's like from seventeen twenty or something.
Well, that can be moved.
Well, maybe, you know, so from there all the way up to, what is it, Olympia Drive or what's the next road?
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's really, a really attractive location for what we're trying to achieve. And maybe we, maybe we list it as a place of interest.
We'd really, really piss off about ten people, ten, ten households.
Well, we might not really, really piss them off, we might, uh, we might just wait for them to die and their heirs are happy as Larry.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, I was gonna uh just jump in quickly, the idea, Doug, of smaller lots is something, in the zoning priorities, there was a forty Y, which is a, a starter home overlay, and it's something staff talked about and has talked about, but you know, in the housing production plan and a number of documents, we said the, the zoning north um, um, of Triangle Street, you know, here's Kendrick Park, so here, and then even on the west side of Kendrick Park, it's always said, well, especially in the housing production plan, it shows, I think both plans and other documents show this as like townhouse-style development. And right now, it's really just one or two big lots, and so, you know, to me, it's like, well, if not an overlay, right, is there some way to say, you know, you could have really small lots here to encourage? Um, you know, essentially, it can be multi-unit development, but everything's on its own parcel, so it can be a fee simple arrangement uh even here as well, and so um forty Y allows much smaller lots, the idea is to have starter homes, and so Mansfield is trying to do it, Mansfield, Mass, and they're essentially creating what is a cluster subdivision with really small lots. Some are a single-family home, some are duplexes with a party wall, but you know, they're trying to encourage, you know, much smaller lots and have a fee simple ownership. I agree, it's, you know, there's a way to try to incentivize it, um, we could try to have some zoning in place in certain areas to allow this. You know, my thought is if we, what Jesse was saying, north of Fearing and this area would be, you know, we could do an overlay or have something that says, well, you know, you have to have a townhouse-style development, you know, and have some design guidelines, so it isn't just a massive five-story building, it could be, you know, you know, for instance, if, um, yeah, so there's probably a different, a few different ways to do it, whether it's, you know, uh, one property or, or smaller properties, but I like the idea of smaller properties, and so that also speaks to cottage-style development. You know, if, you know, if we like having a few single, you know, principal dwellings on a property, you know, could it be designed so that each one is on its own piece of land, or, you know, otherwise it becomes like a condoized development, which isn't a bad thing necessarily, but it could be interesting to allow, you know, four homes on a lot and each have them be on their own lot, it's, it's just a different development approach.
Yeah.
Like that idea.
I mean, you, you kinda know from earlier conversations with me, but the, the first, the, the two properties you highlighted kinda near Kendrick. You know, I, I think that whole area could be larger scale than starter homes, that to me is a waste of high-premium real estate. Um, you know, it's right downtown. Um, but that's a conversation perhaps for another day.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I didn't mean, you know, starter homes per se, I just like, the idea is that the, the state is having this forty Y, allowing much smaller lots for starter homes, but I think you could take that idea.
What, what's the advantage of using the forty Y as opposed to just zoning for smaller lots? Why, why do you need the forty thing?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a, there's a small financial incentive, and some of it would be, well, you could say you're using the state tool so the town can get some, you know, points on a grant application. I agree, there's not, you know, I, I actually think that um, it's probably easier to do it locally without going through the forty Y process in some instances, and so you know, for the west side of Kendrick Park and Triangle Street, to me, we would say, well, I like the idea of, you know, townhouse or row-style, three stories, maybe four under a roof, and that's not starter home, but I like the idea of having smaller lots uh, you know, to encourage a different kind of development approach than, say, just a big apartment building, so.
Well, and that, that kind of development often has an alley at the back that was where you put the trash and you park. Um. And, you know, we have a really lousy street grid. In other words, we don't really have a grid at all. Um. So have, have you guys ever thought about, you know, where would you create new public roads if you had, had your druthers?
Uh.
More street, more frontage?
Yeah, I don't know if it's been done um, not as a, a plant, you know, say, a, a more multi-department approach, you know, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, at one point, if we're uh scrolling down the map, you know, it was contemplated that there'd be another street here, right? Um, between North Prospect and Lincoln.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think originally that was the idea when this was laid out. Um.
I've always thought Prospect, if, it would be pretty easy to blow through to the next road north and pick up that, that street right across the opposite that, you know, could, could Prospect continue all the way up to Fearing?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think what you said, Doug, about alleys, it's why the Triangle Street properties here uh are, you know, why consultants look at it, because they're big enough that you still can have frontage development and you still, they can have parking or another access around it just the way it is now, and so it um, you know, and it's a nice area for a transition. I think if we were talking about the commercial area down on College Street, there are some wetland constraints, but same thing, there's the ability in some areas to have, if not uh roads, but alleys behind buildings, so that, you know, you can put buildings up front and have parking and other things behind.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think when you described the college, college street zone, you started at Hampshire and
Right.
talked about going all the way down to Southeast Street. I thought we actually talked about going all the way out to Rolling Ridge or.
Yeah, I think we talked about going about here.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, but, but that whole area, you know, seems like it's more because of its, it's, because it's not proximate to the university. You know, if we put ten thousand students over there, we'd have huge traffic jams getting, going through town to get to the university. So that kind of, the, the uh development along College Street and Belcher Town Road seem like they, you know, those might be more geared towards families or you know, small individual owners and, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I know, just looking at the figure ground, it's like, okay, well, if you did allow smaller lots here and some, some design, it's like, could you have you know, much more density without having, you know, you could just even allow two-story buildings, but it would just, you know, you could have much more density along the stretch of road.
How many stories is that new, new building just south of the Florence Bank?
Yeah, that's right here, that's uh, I think it's only three stories with a roof.
Is that right?
Three with a roof.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's, so it seems to me you could do three stories through a lot of that area without any, without too much resistance.
Yeah, I think, you know, so if we toggle back and forth, I think what they, what they benefited from was um this little piece of zoning that they were, that allowed three stories. You know, across the street does as well, but then everywhere else in East Amherst, right, you're limited to, you know, commercial doesn't really allow much development at all because of the additional lot area per unit. Uh, and then the, the rest of the zoning in East Amherst doesn't allow any really multi-unit development. Uh, so you're right, there's a really limited ability right now in that area.
Yeah, wasn't it um, Kyle Wilson who said only two percent of Amherst could be developed for multifamily housing or something?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's actually a little less than two percent.
So if fifty percent is not developable at all, that would mean four percent of the developable land or a little less is actually available for multifamily.
Right, yeah, I, you know, I, you know, I think the housing production plan is a nice jumping off point too, where, you know, I think the town, you know, we allowed all these multi-unit developments in the sixties and seventies and then changed our zoning. And so for the last, so many years, we haven't allowed in all this area that's residentially zoned, we have townhouses and apartments by special permit and other, you know, lot area or other requirements that really limits their, their development. And some of it is because, you know, these zones are so big, and so, you know, right, for instance, if we're thinking about East Amherst, you know, that's where to me, uh, you know, an overlay or some other approach, here, you know, like I said, if you change the zoning for this, you know, this zone is, you know, all over town. Um, but, right, maybe these. But right, maybe these areas really do need some other, some other, uh, whether it's a zoning approach or some other idea.
Yeah.
Because, I agree, I think.
I mean, there certainly are places like, like Cambridge, Mass, which have a lot of, of great many zoning districts.
Right.
Um, they have some overlays too, but, but we could split some of these larger areas into many small areas and treat them on a more case by case basis.
Right, or, you know, so we have resident village center and business village center. And it's like, well, do we make a tweak to resident village center and then rezone? Cause there's not much reason, zone for resident village center. And do we just then extend the RVC in certain areas and say, well, now we can allow townhouses and smaller apartment buildings as opposed to just opening up to, you know, five stories? We allow three-story development in the RVC and we just, you know, we can move those zone lines, right? I think there's probably a few, I think that's a, an interesting approach.
Alright, um, any more, Johanna?
This has been a really interesting discussion and I'm trying to figure out a little bit of like, what's the form we give it to go from here? And then I went into this and have been listening, but I keep coming back to the idea that we should be guided by our town's master plan. Like that was, and yes, it's a little bit dated, but I think by and large it is still like what should be guiding our development. And that leads me to really, uh, focus on the downtown and the village centers. And as somebody who works, has spent the past two years working in a building on the north end of town, the whole, um, shape of it feels incomplete. It's like, uh, and so I don't, I don't quite know what's going on there, but like we have this beautiful park and then we have this like weird incomplete disjointed streetscape that where like a pedestrian often is walking in the middle of roads and it just like, it just doesn't hang together conceptually. Um, so I, I'm interested in that. And then the north of Fearing idea, I think sounds great. And I like, you know, I like the idea of, um, I guess first and foremost being guided by the master plan. Yeah, and that north pleasant area, like that seems, that seems like a great spot to add student density. Okay, that's what I got.
Okay.
Yeah, to you, Johanna.
Were you talking about the Mill District, the North Amherst Cent- Center?
No, the north end of downtown.
Oh, the north end of downtown, okay.
Where the, like around that rotary.
Okay.
And, you know, right now there's just a ton of like surface street parking in what is like prime. Like who wouldn't want to live there? It's ama- you know, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the land use policy map, we can, I can send that around from the master plan. So, yeah, what Johanna's saying too, right, so on the corner of, um, uh, so here's the, here's the Kendrick Park, but you know, there's Triangle Street. And then even up along this area, you know, there's a few properties owned by the housing authority. But, you know, I think the redevelopment potential is, could be pretty high here. And then even along North Pleasant, so here's beginning, you know, East Pleasant and North Pleasant. And just in this area, the master plan, you know, here's the land use policy.
Sorry to correct you, but even a little bit farther south, like all the way up to where I would loop in that bank parcel, yeah.
Yeah, so starting here at Triangle Street.
Or starting at Prey Street and going.
Prey Street, oh yeah, sorry, Prey Street, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, you know, uh, I was gonna give an update later, but you know, the Dodson on Flinker Downtown Design Standards, they've, they have some draft standards, they're trying to get a working group meeting going in the next two weeks and then it'll become public at some point. They'd like to come to the planning board in October and start shopping around the boards. And so they have some ideas for some of these areas. And then maybe, you know, they don't go as far north or some of these, but we could take what they're doing and say, well, can we apply it elsewhere? I think they have some nice ideas. Uh, the land use, uh, policy map from the master plan, I'll send that around. Yeah, so you know, really in 1973, the town had a, a, a plan that said identified these village centers, open space around and then having some density. The zoning kind of responded, but there was never really, there hasn't been a big zoning change in an effort to say, here's where we like commercial development and retail or active streets, or here's kind of how we want to tier, you know, or have some hierarchy moving outward from the village center. Uh, and so the master plan is still in, in effect. The charter asked that it be updated every 20 years. So around 2030 is when we need a new master plan. So the idea would be probably in a few years, we'd start to work on updating the master plan. You know, I agree, I think most, I just looked at it for the council, most of it is still really good. I, a lot of the things they say are good. I think some of their overall goals are, I think, need to be re reconsidered. So like preserving community character, you know, at some point it's like, well, what does that really mean as a goal? And, you know, then, and then the next goal was, you know, have economic vitality and grow and change. And it's like, okay, well, you know, how do you balance those and what, what do those mean together? Um, but you know, right, if we look at the master plan map, it's like, where do we have infrastructure? Where, where do we already have development? And, you know, there's a few village centers in downtown that really makes sense. I think even Pomeroy has some potential, maybe even around Atkins with Hampshire College land. But, you know, the South Amherst area, uh, it's very rural, there's not public transportation and, and infrastructure. You know, the town's been looking at the South Amherst School. And, you know, some of the ideas are, do we have a smaller develop, affordable housing development there of maybe 10 or 12 units? You know, we're not, you know, propose a five-story building, but right, I think some of those areas we've identified tonight are worth looking at. Lastly, I'll say these purple areas are professional research park or industrial or commercial zones. Uh, there's some in North Amherst and, you know, they've been there for a long time and they haven't realized anything yet. And so one of the ideas is, does our professional research park or certain zones, you know, could they be rezoned to also allow for housing? Um, you know, are they in the right locations? But, you know, we wouldn't, I wouldn't take away the zone that they're there now and what they allow, but would we add to it? Uh, given that, you know, in 40 years, they haven't been, uh, used. Maybe they'll, maybe that'll change, maybe not, but I think that's another consideration.
Okay, Angus and then Jara, Jara's here. Uh, I, I, I actually noticed that Jara arrived just before 7:30. I'm saying this for the record, so.
Oh, okay.
Pam can record that.
I'm at 7:34, so I'll change that to 7:30.
Yeah, I thought, I, my clock said 7:28 when I first noticed Jara.
7:28, okay.
Yeah. Alright, we want to give you credit for every minute you're here, Jara. Okay Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just finding this conversation really exciting, um, and, and thinking about some of these different options. And I just wanna, um, I think, second what Johanna is saying, um, that, that using the master plan to guide this, um, infill work that we're trying to think about doing and developing areas that are already dense. I think there's, there's different ways to think about that. We're, we're exploring this North Amherst overlay, which I think is a great option. Um, and I, I think one of the things that, that I'm also hearing is, um, thinking about the BBC and RVC zones, um, and how to possibly think about increasing density in them and then extending them farther into different, um, to include different parcels along major frontage roads. Um, is maybe another strategy to think about. Um, that would be maybe a little bit easier, more systemic than doing individual overlays. And we could do a couple of them all at the same time, which would also make it maybe easier for the town council to debate and think about it. You know, again, without, without going crazy, but just trying to think about some of these, like along Belcher Town Road, along College Street, um, you know, the, the portions we've talked about on East Pleasant, all of these, I, I think, you know, could, could stand to be, portions of them could stand to be rezoned. And we could think about densifying some of those RVC BBC zones. Thanks.
Alright, Jara?
Um, hi everyone, I, I totally agree with Angus, this is a really exciting and interesting conversation. And I apologize for my tardiness. But so I, I have two questions. As part of the housing production plan, like community engagement process, were there any geographically based exercises? Like for instance, um, you know, I've, uh, put together events where we have, you know, red dots represent multifamily, blue dots represent single family, green is, you know, preserving open space or something like that. And having people look at an actual map of the town or the county or whatever and using that like density analysis to see where people feel like different housing types might be appropriate. Was there ever, I guess my question is, was there anything like that as, as a part of the housing production plan process? And, um, if not, like what other geographically specific advice did the production plan give us in terms of where to look for additional opportunities for housing?
Yeah, I think the, um, there was a community survey, there was a few hundred responses and there was a few questions that actually asked, you know, I, I forget now, uh, when we, when we, um, it was eventually, you know, finalized in its form, but it did ask some questions to try to get people to say, where do you want density? And we had maybe a dropdown menu of specific areas as opposed to just generically, we're trying to, I don't want to say force a response, but actually have people say where they do or don't want it as opposed to more, um, broadly. I think in one of the forums, they also did do kind of the dots or, uh, some, some stickers. Uh, so there is some of that, I, I'd have to, you know, research it a little bit. I know we did, I just, I'm not sure what the responses were. In terms of the sites, you know, part of the housing production plan is identifying areas where they, you, you know, where some of the strategies could be implemented. And so in this housing production plan, there is a few sites that, uh, the property owner said they'd be willing to, uh, put in there and could be open to the possibility of something happening. So, you know, uh, previously in the old, previous housing production plan, we just took, you know, East Amherst and, uh, the, uh, Bank of America parking lot off South Prospect. And there's a vacant property down in Pomeroy and just said, could you develop those using different housing typologies? So each, you know, this is like corridor development, this was kind of cottage style, this was, you know, more dense infill. And this current housing production plan, there, there's like, I don't know, three to five sites. And same thing, but the idea was maybe these are actually sites that could then be followed up with and have real development happen as opposed to being just kind of a more hypothetical. Uh, but I think we haven't, you know, we haven't identified yet kind of that parcel specific approach. I, I, you know, from this conversation, I think I have like a dozen areas. Some of it would be if we, you know, if we start honing in on something, you know, then it is, uh, probably time to talk to some property owners or neighbors and say, you know, what is the appetite for some of this and, you know, what's, you know, what, what could happen? I, I think, um, you know, the idea of like East Amherst, there's a lot of opportunity there given that the zoning doesn't limit much. I know a few property owners are a little anxious. I mean, they're actually eager, they'd like a zoning change so they could redevelop along, you know, East Amherst. And so, you know, someone would be, well, what does that mean? And would they be willing to have conversations with staff or board members to try to, you know, further that, so.
Nate, um, isn't that an area where there, you said there was a potential historic district being proposed?
Yeah, oh, um, here, this is, you know, generally East Amherst. Uh, here's the Fort River Elementary School, here's, um, the Common, uh, and so the, let me, I'll annotate. The, uh, this is actually the oldest section of town and there is a local historic district being proposed. And the area for it is really, um, here. And the area I would consider rezoning would be, you know, south of it here. So, you know, there might be a little overlap, but I think the, there is a different, um, you know, the, yeah, so to me, the local historic district didn't come down to College Street. I think there's a different character there in terms of the age of homes and what they look like.
Alright, I always forget to move the phone out of this room. Alright, does anybody have any comments at the moment on? I guess having, having sort of triggered my, me about the historic districts. You know, we have the, the, I guess we have two downtown. And I've always felt like those, uh, regulatory bodies are, resist change. And, and if we were say to greatly relax the zoning in one of those, we'd sort of be running counter against how those folks view their, their purpose, I guess, you know? Bruce, I know you're on one, you're on the historic commission. What do you think about historic districts? And, and if we were to relax zoning in areas that are overlap with historic districts?
It's, I'm on the historic district commission, actually, I'm not. I suddenly discovered the day before yesterday.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Uh, but I haven't thought about the, the two together. Uh, there hasn't seemed to be much. I don't, Doug, I have to, I have to dig into that a little bit. I, I can simply say straight off that I haven't, uh, thought of any, um, conflicts or opportunities that would, anything peril con for, for that, I, uh, that you might be able to. Now, I, I, the, the historic district, uh, commission is, is, uh, you know, and it's, it's trying to preserve and and, and maintain a, a look and a feel. So it's not really trying to, um, um, inflate or deflate what's there, it's trying to essentially manage what's there.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean, you know, if, if we were to relax zoning, say along both sides of Fearing Street. I mean, I know we just talked about the north side of Fearing Street, which is not a historic district. Hypothetically, you know, the south side is in historic district, so, um, you know, and, and if, so, I mean, it's just, you know, I think there's, generally I, I feel like the historic district is trying to freeze what's there. And so that is running counter to redevelopment that would allow greater density or occupancy.
It may be, uh, I, 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 I don't entirely agree. I, I think that, that insofar as we are thinking perhaps about the north side of Fearing Street, I think we could structure our, uh, much as you were suggesting, um, and the, I, I, I guess I'm looking at the person I'm talking to and the screen moves around and I get discombobulated. But, uh, we could structure the overlay, the design guidelines or, or, or more, uh, around creating, stimulating or even just allowing, uh, buildings that would be out of scale or inappropriate. Um, which is probably why I think that what we might seek to encourage in the Fearing Street would be quite different from what we are seeking to encourage in North Amherst. So I think, yes, the historic district, uh, uh, commissions, uh, goals reg, and, 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 uh, guidelines, we've just actually, we're working on, on, uh, producing a set of guidelines. And that would be helpful for this, uh, for this board to indicate, you know, what the commission, what, what the commission values. But I think that would probably be, we would take those guidelines and, and the experience of the commission to guide the way in which the, uh, the, the overlay, um, design, design restrictions or objectives were framed.
Okay, alright, well, we've now got a lot of hands, starting with you Nate and then three more.
Sure, I was gonna say, the local historic district, I think the, you know, there's 180 Fearing. If you look it up, it's on the corner of Sunset and Fearing, it's a multi-unit development. Uh, through the local historic district, some of the units were redesigned and the site plan was changed. You know, to me, that was probably the, you know, given where the local historic districts are, there hasn't been a lot of, um, projects, say for bigger development, you know, say bigger in terms of units or size of building. So I think that one was a nice process. You know, some people might say it's anti-development, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I think it's really trying to shape the, the, the appearance and the massing. And so agreed, if we relax, say the zoning in the Sunset Fearing neighborhood and we said we allow cottage style development and there's some bigger lots there, that would have to go through the local historic district. To me, that would just mean that the, the style and massing and the location of the, of the structures would have to be compatible with the, you know, the, the other, the neighboring properties and, and, uh, buildings. So I don't think it's an impossibility, that might add another layer of review. Uh, the only other one I was thinking is Amherst Media was, you know, proposed a new building. Uh, the only other one I was thinking is Amherst Media was, you know, proposed a new building on the corner of, um, on the, uh, Main Street and Gray Street. And that was approved through a lengthy process, but you know, eventually if, you know, there was a building that I think everyone thought was much, much improved compared to what was originally, um, proposed. So, you know, I don't think they're incompatible. I think it is, it is, I agree. It's, it is. It's another permit. It's another review. I think, you know, to me, I would then be aware of if we do change zoning, you know, how do we, how do those interact? And so, right, if we're saying, well, now we allow five-story buildings in some of these areas and the local historic district would say, well, that's not really compatible. Then maybe that, that approach to density or size isn't, doesn't work, right? So there's, I think in the local historic district areas, you still could allow doubling of density, tripling of density perhaps even. And still get approved through the local historic district. It, it, it's the approach that an applicant or developer would use. So, you know, uh, you know, are they gonna do?
I mean, wasn't there that, I mean, I, I don't remember how really nice or, or the architectural character of that property on Fearing Street. That was shot down by the historic district and then did, uh, increase the density on that lot. Um, and I thought, I, I, I mean, I didn't follow it closely, but it felt like the primary reason for. Shooting it down was not about the architectural character. It was about the, the addition of parking and units that students might live in.
Yeah. So there was a, a proposal for a property on Fearing. The applicant withdrew. This was, gosh, I guess that was probably a year and a half ago. And there's an existing three-story building, a three-unit building. It's two and a half stories and they, they were going to, it's a pretty big lot. They could have added five or six units or something. Um, I, you know, the local historic district commission looked at, I, I do think that they changed the plans, but the, the buildings themselves were really big. So at one point they were going to put in an apartment building and then they decided they were going to put in three duplexes. And each duplex, I think was like forty by forty and two and a half stories. And so the buildings themselves were actually pretty massive footprints. And so, you know, to me, it's like if they had done, you know, like an addition to the house, right? They could have done it. So maybe it looked like a barn or maybe it was an addition to the house and they could have added three units. That worked, but instead the idea was to have kind of big footprints, big square hip roof buildings that to me weren't really. To me, architecturally didn't work with the surroundings. So it never actually, I don't know if it actually became a full application of the local historic district. I think it was actually just a preview of what they're doing. And then the applicant withdrew, getting a sense that they, what they were proposing probably wouldn't be approved. But it actually never moved forward as a formal application. I think that could have happened actually. Uh, they just never proposed it.
Okay. Uh, Jesse?
Just really just a quick information question. Uh, so is that true about then the ADU by right as well? Would go to the historic district for review? Just hadn't come up in any of our conversations. Just wondering.
Yeah. So, yeah, any, any product in a local historic district, so even the new ADUs, uh, that, you know, are allowed from the state. Uh, they still have to be reviewed by the local historic district commission. So the one at the corner of Lincoln and Fearing. When that came forward, the applicant had done a fair amount of research. The local historic district commission made a few changes that to me improved the building. So a steeper pitched roof, um, porticoes on the entries. And I think some variation in siding material. And so maybe even windows, but you know, so the, the footprint necessarily didn't change. And what the layout of the interior was, but you know, those few changes to me to the exterior were an improvement. So now you have instead of a, a kind of an odd slow, low pitched roof, I think it was like an eight or 10, um, pitch. And you had, you know, some nice entries. And so, you know, as opposed to like the pre-cast concrete stairs, you had, you know, say some wider entries. And so to me, those were, the applicant seemed pretty willing. And to me, those are changes that make, will, will make the structure look nicer. Uh, so.
Quick, quick side note. If anybody wants to see what an AD looks like, drive by that corner. Cause the foot, the, the, the foundation's down on the first floor and it looks very big. Just for the record.
Okay. Brad?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment that, uh, the north side of Fearing Street, I think is a, uh, definitely a legitimate. Area to look at, uh, it has, uh, really, uh, been through the wringer. Uh, for decades now, and that's probably the most constructive thing that's now available for it. So. So I don't know. I, I, that's, it's too bad, but I, I, you, you can't go backwards. I don't think so.
Okay. Angus?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, you know, I, I'm a historian by training and so I, I, I like historic districts in a lot of ways, but I'll, I'll just add that. I mean, at least, um, most studies that look at things, um, different kinds of overlays that, that we can place for zoning. Find that, that historic designations like this do tend to decrease density and tend to put up roadblocks for, um, for developers. So that doesn't necessarily mean that it would happen here, but at least across the country, that's, that tends to be what happens when you create, um, a historical designation like this.
All right. Okay. The time is eight oh nine. I don't see any hands at the moment. We have no public attendees. Um, we usually take a break around now. Do people feel like it's time to do that? Or do they want to plow through and just try to get through everything else if we're done with this? I saw several nods when I said, let's take a break. Um, so why don't we take a five-minute break? Come back at eight fifteen. Uh, Johanna, were you gonna suggest we keep going?
Well, I was gonna ask how long we thought the rest of the content might be projected to take. As if we take a five-minute break and then we have five more minutes of content. That seems silly.
Well, we have the usual sort of, uh, this is the, 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 the regular items with the old and new business. The, the format, the, the applications, which ones are coming? And then we have the committee and liaison reports. And from my perspective, it doesn't have to take long. Uh, Nate, what do you think? Is that a substantive?
I was gonna preview the zoning priorities list and a few things. Um, it might take, you know, more than 10 minutes.
Fifteen minutes to get through it?
Right.
Then I propose we take a break.
Okay. All right. So come back at eight fifteen. Thank you. All right. My clock is showing eight sixteen. I don't know if anybody's hiding behind their cameras that are off. But if you are around, please turn your camera back on. All right. We got everybody back but Johanna. There she is. Okay. Time is eight eighteen and we'll go ahead. Um, we had gotten to a point in the conversation about housing where I didn't see any hands from anyone. Um, Nate, uh, were there, did you wanna probe anymore on that topic tonight? Or do you wanna, did you get kind of what you were hoping for?
Yeah, no, I think that was a good start to a conversation. So I don't think we need to belabor it tonight. Uh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. We'll move on to next topic, which is old business. Uh, anything not reasonably anticipated in advance? Pam or Nate? Nothing. Okay. How about for new business? Anything? Nope. Nate, Nate? No? Nothing?
No, no, no. I, I was just thinking we have a, you know, I think what's the next one with the site plan reviews, you have a few upcoming, but that's.
Okay. All right. So for, uh, Form A subdivision, A and R subdivision applications, anything? Nothing?
No, not at this point.
Okay. ZBA?
Um, and I'm not aware of anything Nate to bring forward. Are you?
I'm not either, actually.
Yeah. Okay.
And SPP, SPR and SUB applications?
Yeah. So three sixty-three Main Street, we, I think I mentioned this Bruno's Pizza, they're, uh, reducing the size of the, their, uh, restaurant space. And putting an extra residential unit. And it's a mixed-use building that at the time was permitted through a special permit with the zoning board. It'll come to the planning board at the next October, a meeting October eighth. So it'll be a site plan review and a special permit. Um, and we'll, I mean, we can have a site visit. There's not really many exterior changes at all, actually. It's, it's really a change in, um. It's amending the previous special permit and then it's also, um, allowing some conditions in terms of a mixed-use building. So, you know, we, you can see that. Um, we mentioned the new building down on, in East Amherst that Amir Mikchi had developed behind the Florence Savings Bank. Uh, he's currently going through the conservation commission or starting to, to put a similar building across the street. And so, uh, that, it hasn't been officially filed with the planning board yet, but that'll be a site plan review application. And possibly a special permit application for additional height. Uh, and that'll be, um, if not October twenty-second, then probably in early November.
Okay. All right. Uh, moving on to committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything for PVPC?
No, uh, there's an October ninth face-to-face, so maybe one day.
Okay. Jesse, anything on housing sub, and zoning subcommittee?
Uh, you've heard a lot of it. I think, uh, we started some new conversations about zoning with Angus's leadership on that front. I think Nate, you were gonna talk about this a bit.
Yeah, I'll share my screen. You know, we, staff had a, a few years ago had a zoning priority list. The Community Resources Committee of the Town Council had one. And, you know, we've achieved a fair amount. Uh, there's been a few zoning changes and so we developed a new list. I think it's something for the board to look at. And if you want to email me, before the next meeting, I think the idea would be to identify, you know, zoning strategies that staff could work on. And then that the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee could work on. And then like we said, maybe it's some that then, um, we could have a joint meeting with the Housing Trust or we could talk to the CRC or Housing Trust and see if they'd want to pick them up. And so, you know, the zoning can be anything from like technical fixes to, you know, rewriting a whole, you know, the signed by law. So I, I'll share the screen now. I think I have that available. Uh, maybe I, hold on a second. Um, and I think the, uh, yeah, and I, I think it's, you know, we, sometimes what happens is we develop these lists and then they. We kind of lose focus. So I'd like to kind of keep this going, right? So for instance, the, the multi-use apartment overlay that was developed in two thousand thirteen, it never went anywhere.
Nate, we are not, we're not seeing your screen yet.
Yeah. I'm just mentioning, so.
Just wanted to.
Yeah. So for instance, like the old multi-unit apartment overlay in two thousand thirteen, it didn't make it to a zoning amendment. It seemed it was like too fraught. It was townwide, but no one then said, well, what if we just look at one section? But instead we just moved on, the department at the time and zoning committee just moved on to a whole nother, you know, zoning idea. And maybe that one would have, should have been, you know, thought about a little bit more at the time. And so. you know, zoning idea, and maybe that one would, should have been, you know, thought about a little bit more at the time. And so I'd like to have a nice list, keep it going, and, you know, refer back to it every now and then. So, you know, the current list is, you know, there's a dozen or so things, you know, identify areas for new development. We've kinda talked about that. Looking at the BL area around downtown in anticipation of the design review standards being complete. The sign bylaw, so right now we have a section of our bylaw that, you know, deals with signs, and that is really out of date and needs to be updated. South Hadley is just doing that right now, so there is a local community. You know, a lot of these are kind of housing-related, so allowing multiple principal dwellings on a property, I think that's a really important one. Cottage-style development. You know, one right here, limited site plan review or administrative approval for protected uses. And, you know, in the last two years, a lot of the planning board hearings have been for what are considered protected uses by mass general law. So, you know, a group home down in South Amherst, the conversion of the motel in East Amherst to residential use, the Dickinson Museum Carriage House. Other communities approached that with limited site plan review or administrative approval, and if it's maybe a big enough project, it gets full site plan review. But I think that there's probably, you know, we could maybe look at whatever, what conditions we impose on some of these projects and come up with a way to categorize them and maybe limit what gets, you know, to a full site plan review, right? It gives the planning board more time to do other things and helps the applicant. You know, forty-Y overlay, that's a starter home overlay, senior housing. Fix the definition of owner occupied. And then, you know, there was a kind of a question asked at the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. You know, what, how much, you know, in a site plan review hearing, you know, sometimes we can spend, the planning board and staff, even we can all spend a lot of time talking about certain things that are, say, details, and is there ways to build in some more prerequisites for a site plan review application, so that, you know, if utilities need to be screened and an applicant comes in and just, you know, they're not screening the utilities, you know, can we say that's an incomplete application and get to a point where we have certain standardized conditions? We kind of do now, but make those part of an application process, so what the board is discussing isn't, you know, it can be other parts of the project. Change the PRP zoning, I mentioned that as our, part of our discussion. Modify mixed-use building standards and outlining of those centers or even in downtown, so we have a thirty percent in the overlay, we had a depth, you know, to twenty-four feet, seventy-five, along seventy-five percent of the facade length, so it was a different definition or standard for the non-residential piece. Maybe that needs to be explored. And then in the zoning bylaw, we, we used to refer to the permit granting board, the zoning board, the planning board, and the permit granting authority. And then a few years ago, we tried to standardize that and say the permit granting authority. And there's a definition, but we never actually went back and changed it within the zoning bylaw. So, you know, again, I think in Article seven, for instance, about parking and landscape standards, I think most of the references to permit board should just be permit granting authority. The difference being that in the permit granting authority, it names the building commissioner or staff if this, if the, the application or change could be administratively approved. And, you know, we can discuss it more, but it's, you know, to me that says that if someone's coming in, they're having a minor change to a site plan, say it's to the, some parking issues, if we say the permit granting authority related to parking, the building commissioner could look at it and say, oh, you just wanna like move your islands around a little bit. That's fine. The way it's worded now, that kind of change would actually come back to the planning board as a full site plan review application, because there's no way to handle that kind of change administratively. So, you know, there could be others. Some of these are really big. You know, like cottage-style development could be, you know, something the planning board directs the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee to really look into, or maybe that's something about the Housing Trust to do, but that could be, you know, looking at case studies, looking at different, you know, actually zoning bylaws and proposing what works in town, where, what zoning districts. The signed bylaw could be, it could be really technical, but something that the building commissioner inspectors and staff use a lot, so. You know, this isn't prioritized, it's enumerated, but it's not prioritized, so, you know, this has been shared out. If you have other ideas, you can add them to the list and then talk about it, and then, you know, subsequent meetings.
All right. So you're inviting us to add to this list?
Yep, or add comments, or, yep.
Okay. Johanna?
If it truly is what you're describing, Nate, I would just move that we do point fourteen right now, so that we can cut like unnecessary silly red tape.
All right. Bruce?
I just wanted to ask a question about the open space and community development bylaw. I have a special interest in that, of course, because it was, it kind of grew out of the cohousing initiatives in town. Is that being used, Nate? Is there any reason to, after fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty years, twenty-five years, to modify it, tweak it, refine it in any way to make it more useful, 'cause it was intended to be a kind of a middle ground between special permits and so forth, and then the, or subdivisions, and, and all the way, the PUD, planned, the, the PUD or PURD requires or requires an approval by town meeting, which was basically made it an unworkable arrangement, so the OSCD was put in to basically allow PUD-type development on a smaller scale. I thought it was a rather significant improvement or addition, because it was a whole new development mechanism or approach. And I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to know how it's going, and is it being used enough, or is there, are there any obvious rough edges that would make it more useful?
Yeah, the, so, you know, in our bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, there's a few different development methods, right? There's, you know, like a traditional subdivision, cluster, this open space conservation development, planned urban residential development. I, I just put this as fifteen. And so to me, like cottage-style development would be perhaps another development method. I think, Bruce, to your point, I think it's something to look at. Sometimes they, they have, some of these development methods haven't been used very much. It could be complicated, it could be that they, you know, if they need a special permit, for whatever reason, there's, they haven't been used a lot. And so Doug, going back to what you're saying about allowing smaller lots or trying to encourage certain kind of style development in terms of housing type, we could tweak or have a new, you know, development method, right, that applies in certain zoning districts that gets to some of what you were saying. And so I think it's worth looking at those development methods. So, some of them haven't been used really at all, right? I mean, for years. And so, you know, for instance, will a cluster subdivision, you know, there's been a few, but, you know, could we modify it to do something else, or could we even make in a cluster, could we actually allow even smaller lots to get to what, you know, what we're saying in terms of density or different kinds of housing? So, you know, the open space conservation development, I I'm trying to think.
Community development.
Yeah, they haven't, community development, it's been used. I don't know, Vista Terrace down in South Amherst by Atkins may have been that, but it may have just been a traditional cluster. And so the last one that may have been used was, gosh. It's, it's been a number of years. There's the one off State Street, and then there's another one, so not, not a lot.
Yeah, I know it's got a hundred and fifty-foot setback, I think, from farmland, which that seems to me to be a, a bit of a stretch. I mean, an unnecessarily conservative setback.
Yeah, I think that's something to examine.
I don't know whether that's made any difference to anybody. It would to us. I mean, we are, we had considered at one point changing our five co-mingled lots, each of which is developed with a separate special permit. So, we have a cohousing community, but it's, it's its land use permitting basis is five separate special permits. I mean, it's a, it's a crazy mess, and it made Bob Mitchell in nineteen ninety's more or less weep into his hands as I was explaining it to him. And so this was supposed to make that kind of nonsense go away. So when it came out, I thought, well, maybe we'll just see if we can convert ourselves to an OSCD, and and, and we ran right up against a hundred and fifty-foot setback from the farmland that you couldn't do it. So it basically eliminated any possibility that we could be, that we could use this, this development method.
Yeah, so, you know, the development method can be applied in different zoning districts, and you can have different standards, and so, yeah, I think, I think you can add to the list, the, for instance, the community homes that's being, is under construction at the corner of Montague Road and Pulpit Hill, could almost have been one of these development methods, but it was just too complicated to draw all these individual lot lines and with the utilities and parking, and so they needed a little bit more flexibility, so he said, let's make it a comprehensive permit. But if, if some of these development methods were a little bit more flexible, we could have those kinds of developments elsewhere in town without having to go through, you know, some really complicated permitting. And so is it, I think it's worth looking at, is it, you know, like a few standards or requirements within the development method that if modified would allow, you know, clustering of homes without a traditional subdivision, elder places, and that's, if we wanna encourage that, then, you know, we can look at, right, those kinds of changes.
Okay, that's enough.
All right, Nate, I'm not seeing any other hands right now. But I'm, oh, there's Angus, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, I was just gonna, gonna ask, or maybe, and or maybe make a suggestion, which is kind of about the, maybe next steps. And I, I'm wondering if this is something, it feels like the next steps are, we need to kind of prioritize which things the planning board would be interested in kind of pushing forward ourselves, which things we'd like the staff to focus on. And so I guess I'm wondering, is this, does it make sense for us in this meeting to talk through what our priority, to, to kind of rank some of these? Or does it make sense for the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee in our next meeting to spend some time trying to think and rank, and then bring it back to the planning board for kind of everyone's input? What are, what are we thinking in terms of like the next steps for the process?
Nate, do you have any initial reaction to that?
You know, I think we could wait to hear back from other board members, and then at the, you know, Housing and Zoning Subcommittee, we could then talk about it and bring it back to the board. So, you know, my thought would be, you know, the next one or two planning board meetings, this would be its own agenda topic, and we could, you know, put some time into it. And then, you know, work, work at that level. I think that Housing and Zoning Subcommittee could also discuss it at the next meeting to add to it, maybe come up with a, you know, kind of a rough prioritization.
All right. I saw another hand and then it went away. Okay, Bruce is waving me off. All right, all right, then we'll move on, I guess. We were up, that was the Housing and Subcommittee conversation. Angus, have you, have you entered into CPAC world yet? No.
I don't think I've been voted on yet.
Okay, are we waiting, Nate, for the town manager to appoint him or something?
Oh, maybe. Yeah, make, I'll make a note of that. I think they were waiting to have another representative from another committee, and then there, I think the idea was to try to bring the CPA committee appointments at one meeting. At this point, I think.
They already voted on, on one person at the last meeting, or like two meetings ago, but it wasn't me.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'll look into that. I thought, yeah, I know I communicated it with the town manager's office that you were the planning board representative, so.
It took her a long time, sorry, Paul, a long time to get me onto the planning commission, so lighting a fire under him is probably a good idea.
And, and Nate, would it be okay for Angus to attend their meetings in the interim?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, or, you know, you can watch the videos. I will say proposals are due September thirtieth, and then the committee really starts their work.
So he hasn't missed much yet?
Yeah, in mid, mid-October, so.
Okay. All right, and then we haven't, Nate, did you talk to Karen at all about the DRB? Is she gonna report, or should we take this off the agenda until next June?
No, you know, I, I haven't talked to her. I was gonna wait to hear back from the town manager's office, but I think I, I could just ask staff, and then I can come back to the board with a report.
Okay. Okay, I don't really have any report of chair. I was gonna mention, I think, I think Nate may have mentioned we, in October, our, our schedule is not the usual first and third, because the first of October is Yom Kippur, so we're not meeting on the first. Well, we meet on the eighth, and then, what is it, the twenty-second, I guess. So, just to let you all know that. Bruce?
On the meeting of the eighth, I'll probably ask what, maybe agenda, a brief moment about the the planning board picnic, or whatever you wanna call it, at my place, which is on the following weekend, so who brings what? And I wanna manage expectations generally downward, but we'll see.
So that we should know the weather by then, too.
Yes, yes. So remind me to do that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Nate and Pam, any report from staff?
Well, they said that, you know, there's the Amherst Block Party tomorrow evening. It's happening downtown. The downtown design standards, as I mentioned, hopefully there'll be a presentation to the board in October to look at draft standards. There is the East Amherst Local Historic District. The commission just voted this week to approve the study report, preliminary study report. It'll be sent to Massachusetts Historical Commission. And then, within that, so there's ninety days to provide comment. During that commentary, the planning board also needs to hold a, a public meeting. I think it's just a public meeting to review the report. So in October or early November, the planning board will need to review the preliminary study report for East Amherst. I'm not, you know, I'll have to, not sure if it's, it is, the board is named in the process. I think it was just an idea to provide comments and ideas and suggestions for the study committee. I, I think that's it.
All right. Anyone have anything else? Time is eight forty-one. All right, we will see you October eighth.
Yay.
Enjoy the rest of the month and see you later. Good night.
Night.
Everyone.
Night, everyone. Thanks.
Recording.